I am.
Yeah, I don't think.
And no joke. I still think you're walking to the third one. Not this. When these little chairs are in charge.
When. Right. So he's from here.
Already gone, right? All right, everybody, I'm mumbled here. Okay. Good evening, everybody. This is the special meeting in Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors. Please join me in signing the pledge of allegiance.
Like the reason that's in the. And so the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First present, good myself, Chair Jacob Pride, Vice Chair Robert Love, I'm via Zoom, Supervisor Michael Albert, Conservation Recreation Director Dr. Eric Jackson, Township Manager Julie Heilica, Middle Smithfield Township Supervisor Mary Dwyer, Conservate, um, oh, Engineer Melissa Hutcheson, committee members Francis Oquendo and R. J. Clark, Kyle Jenkins. I think I've got everybody. We don't have Ken here today. So, um, we're gonna do the presentation and discuss the next steps, and after we do that, we'll entertain general public comment. So Missy, is there anything else on the housekeeping side?
No.
Are you ready?
Ready.
Sweet.
Yeah. Um, so tonight, uh, since we're all together again, I think, uh, we'll go through the narrative itself, just briefly go through what each section is for, and then we can talk some more about the plan. Um, there have been some minor changes that I'll point out, um, to you. But, um, so just, uh, paging through real fast, not real fast, but.
I suggest your question. These are all the same. Are they multiple?
They are all the same.
Like that's like eight versions of the same thing?
Oh, I don't know.
It's just, the top one is the relevant document.
Okay, well, it's just a bunch and we could hand them out. Okay, all right, reasonable question. Okay.
So just going through, uh, quickly to make sure we have all the DCNR requirements. Um, section A is just the purpose, goals, and objectives of this plan, which is create a flexible plan with the desired amenities while preserving natural features, protecting and recognizing historical assets, and safeguarding endangered species and any species of special concern. Uh, section B is probably the largest part of this report, and that's public participation. Um, we started with a kickoff meeting with the study committee in August of twenty twenty four. Um, then we held a second study committee meeting. There were two board of supervisors meetings. There's a hybrid meeting with the committee and the board supervisors. And through all of these meetings, we discussed the goals of the project, um, the citizen survey, what is your, um, contain and the results of that survey. Uh, we talked about who to include in the key person interviews and what were the results of those interviews. Um, we reviewed and discussed the four concept plans and ultimately chose one that has been fine tuned. Um, and that is before you today. Also part of the planning process. Well, uh, is, is, you know, we had to, um, include, uh, demographics and economy and, and how that relates to, uh, Smithfield Township in the area of the park. We included a discussion on page nine of the Shawnee Mini St. Clovis archaeological site. And then we also included a discussion of the New York Siskiyou Hannah and Western Railroad. We went through and discussed natural and resources and critical habitats, um, the one hundred year flood plain, uh, the existing species of vegetation and, um, animal that are in the area. On page twelve, we noted, uh, local parks within Smithfield, Middle Smithfield Township, and then also on parks that are within five miles of Rivers Edge. We researched comprehensive planning, including the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty nine Pennsylvania statewide comprehensive outdoor recreation plan public survey report. The Smithfield Township Comprehensive Plan and the Eastern Monroe Regional Open Space Recreation Plan for Delaware Watergate Borough, Middle Smithfield Township, Price Township, and Smithfield Township. And I'd like to point out that plan, uh, noted that the Rivers Edge Family Bike Park was listed as a top priority for. Um, again, we went through background information. This is just section D is really of the previous section we discussed. Um, section E, we talked about local access to outdoor recreation facilities, and in this part, we had to compare Rivers Edge Bike Park to, um, a park metric system um, that the National Recreation and Park Association has. That includes, you know, how many residents are per park, how much full time staff is needed, how much operating expenses there are. Uh, we talked about the existing bike park and how that would be, uh, rehabilitated. The existing golf, disc golf course, which will be expanded. Uh, active recreational facilities in the plan, which we'll discuss a little further, um, when we talk about the actual plan itself. I'm gonna jump ahead to section H talks about cost estimate and phasing. It's on page twenty eight. What begins on page twenty eight. Um, and that, that part of the report talks and discusses the estimated construction costs. It's listed in phases from phase A to phase L, so the township can pick and choose which phase they would like to construct first, last, depending on, um, whether or, uh, whether and when they receive grant revenues. It also talks about, um, MPS permitting, which would be required, and a phase one environmental study. Section I talks about operation and maintenance costs. Both existing and future.
Where, where did, can I ask where did that come from?
Um, so.
You're showing about operating management concept of this part of this park, this one?
Of this one, yes.
Um, not current or as it will be?
Uh, both. So currently, um, existing operation maintenance cost is on the bottom of page twenty nine.
Yeah.
Um, and that's, uh, taken from a rate that, um, Alex suggested to me.
There's, yeah, I think that's awesome. What has it changed? Let's go twenty five thousand.
About twenty six thousand dollars.
Twenty five eight, yeah?
Yeah, and then we think the cost would increase, um, because you have additional amenities. You're gonna need some time, um, to maintain the park. Um, you're going to have restrooms that will have to be maintained, um, snowpiling the paved parking lot, um, you know, maybe additional visits by the constable is needed. So, um, we estimated.
About thirty five, looks like.
About thirty, yeah, thirty five thousand dollars would be the new operating cost.
So about ten more. A little bit less than.
Yep. Um, we also talked about revenue a little bit, um, and how, you know, right now you have some out of county residents visiting per weekend. Um, we thought maybe a twenty five percent increase of total, uh, you know, uh, visitors, and out of that, you know, you would have so many from out of county that would pay. And then also you could do a pavilion rental for some revenue, um, if, you know, some program wants to come and do a meeting or something like that at the park, you can, um, charge a fee.
Sure.
Uh, section J talks about security analysis. Um, I spoke with the constable and emergency management coordinator, um, and there were four key items that we talked about, lighting. Uh, lighting should be in the parking lot, but not within the park itself, uh, if they both felt that it would, um, invite people into the park after hours, which
Right.
you do not want. Um, signage, uh, listing fines for any violations. A fence with the gate along River Road and then a security station with the gates right before you enter the parking. And then moving on to sections. Section K talks about existing recreational amenities again. So we talked about the disc golf course, the pump track, and the existing nature trails. Section L discusses the significant historical areas, the structures review. We spoke with, um, the state historic preservation office. And they do believe that if any ground disturbing activity is proposed, a phase one study should be done on the, on the field.
Right.
And then a forest stewardship plan was created with the help of the county forester, which Alex and I met with back in November. Um, so that's just a, a brief overview of the narrative. I don't know if the committee or the supervisors have any questions on any of those items before we move on to the plan. No?
That's your problem.
Okay. Um, so the plan has been. We met, uh, back in August. And at that meeting, we presented concept three that was revised based upon discussions of the hybrid meeting. Um, we a- added and expanded the parking lots. We added the fence along River Road. Security booth at right before you enter the parking lot.
Yeah. I see. Is that right? My scene is right. There's like would be a turnaround. So if it's closed, it doesn't mean you pull over and nearly get hit by a car. You come in and then have to turn around right away. There's nowhere to park.
Right, right, right. And then there is some additional parking there on the side. Um, when you would turn around and go back out on the top driveway in case you need overflow parking. Um, we added that. It will be a lawn surface, so it won't be very apparent, but it huge, the driver could be directed there if needed. Um. The, we talked about, um, eh, expanding the nine hole golf course with nine more holes. That will include two additional baskets for ADA accessibility. Um, the kayak and canoe launch was removed, but an overlook area was kept. The restrooms, drinking fountain, and playground were relocated to be closer to the existing pump track. And a buffer yard was provided along the eastern property line shared with the residents at that location. Um, since the August meeting and for that discussion, we added an overlay for an expanded bike park, and it showed over the dog park. That way, if, if the township decides to do an expanded bike park versus the dog park, there is space for it, and it is provided on the master plan. The two hundred foot buffer along the eastern property line, there's an area of woodlands that go into the township property. Uh, an area cleared area that goes into the township property, property, the two hundred foot buffer is taken from that edge rather than the property. It doesn't change any of your proposed amenities.
Right, right.
Good. And all those existing trails, those were all the ones, yeah, it's beyond those lines anywhere that are gonna be removed.
Right, right, yep. Um, we talked about playground costs at the last meeting. I did have a good discussion with Toby Hannah Township. Their playground was about four hundred thousand dollars. They didn't include the entire surface was not, didn't have safety surfacing. And they did not have a fence. So I kept our number the same.
Two things that we definitely.
So I think, yeah, the safety surfacing was a, a large number, so I kept.
Yeah, it's like the rubberized texture that get, has more of a bounce rather than much.
Yep, yep. Um, and then I also reached out to Port Jurgen, but as we're playing a bit of phone pad, um, regarding maintenance, so I'm hoping to hear back from them.
Regarding ma- maintenance costs related to the bike park or their, uh.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, uh, when I hear back from them, I can, uh, report to everyone. So that's it on the plan. Some minor tweaks since the last meeting, um. But.
The concepts that are here in the next phases, those are going to DCNR as well, right?
Yes, they're part of our final group paper.
Uh, these concepts that are here are the, um, the large version or the small version?
Uh, I'll send you.
So the, for, for thi- for this one right here specifically, this one was an idea I had of if we were to keep the original layout of the pump track to re- revise it, like, and a more better way to make it more fun and enjoyable and actually worth the ride, like actually the ride time to, to ride the pump track. So that's why you'll see uh, icon that I drew on the bottom where it's table, roller, and then squirrel catcher type hip. Um, so like, cause right now the pump track only has nothing but rollers, roller firms, nothing fancy. And then you look at like, you know, if you turn to, uh, uh, this one right here, the last one, this is Port Jurgen's. If you look at Port Jurgen, it's not just rollers, but there's a little bit of everything in between. And that was kind of my idea, if we were to revise the original layout of the design of Rivers Edge Bike Park, instead of having just rollers, maybe add like add some tabletops. Add, you know, some fun things for people to still like ride over so they can get a feeling, you know, get comfortable with it and be safe. And then once they get comfortable, they can go all out, have fun. Uh, the other designs that I found, uh, these were all, well, this one and the other one that looked just like it were all designed from Bella Solution. Uh, these were computer designs that I found online. And, uh, they do pretty much the same thing where they add rollers, add tables, add hips, but they're not like space, they're not gas, but you can't, you can't get hurt on it. Just ride over them with no problem. Um. What else? And, uh, this other one that I made, it was just, you know, it was just shooting off the top of my head for it. I personally feel like if we did something like, will we add, you know, like how this one, this one sketch I did, go next to the tables? Or it's something like Port Jurgen's where you can have endless lines where you can just ride everything all day, where it's like, oh, I can go this way. Oh, I can go that way. Oh, I can go that way. You know, a lot of riders would appreciate that because the more they have things to ride, the more they're gonna wanna stay. I would do, if only I had a photo to show everybody, Hanover's pump track that just got built by Dirt Sculpt. That is, that would be a perfect, perfect example to show everybody, cause they added. It looks just, it's very similar to Port Jurgen's. However, it's, they added a lot more things involved that are still fun and safe for everybody to ride with, and including the hips, squirrel catchers, the rollers, the, uh, the doubles that are just tabletops. And then, um, cause what, what you don't see in this Port Jurgen's pump track photo is behind that is actually the beginner course where it's just an oval. And Dirt Sculpt also added that at the most recent Hanover bump sack that they just built as well. Which, you know, something like that, uh, I think would be good, especially for the little kids that are on the push bikes before they get on, you know, the actual bike, and they just start to ride these, uh, ride the pump track. Um, yeah.
Uh, I've seen it, uh, at park conventions, uh, vendors who have portable equipment that goes into pump tracks so that you can vary the, uh, um, the design of it. Are you interested in that at all or for maybe a portion of this so that it doesn't get monotonous? It can always be changed.
Um, you know, like I'm, I'm for anything, really. I'm just really about getting this pump track paved and safe and the drains fixed, so it can properly flow to the river, so that nobody in the homes don't have to worry about any major flooding. And, you know, most importantly, revenue for the town for out of, out of, kind of, I mean.
Well, well, if, if this is a, uh, a possibility, and I'm not sure it is, I just looked at it at, uh, conventions, so I've never really gotten into it, but, uh, to me, it sort of represents, uh, and it's an equivalent of what you have in ski resorts. We have a, a terrain park where, uh, you can change it, and every year it's a little different so that they can get people to come back and say, hey, you know, yeah, try this this year, try this. And maybe we need a little of that here, so we give the flexibility to offer people always something new.
No, but, you know, that goes back to, uh, you know, if we have to remove the dog parks, cause you know, we can have, you know, three, three levels of pump tracks, you know, beginner, intermediate, and then expert pump tracks, so that they don't just have one thing to ride, they have multiple things to ride.
I was gonna ask, Missy, in, in the future, I mean, we're kind of leaving the future expansion on that side open ended. I don't think. I think it might be late in the game for like this one to have the varied, uh, infrastructure, but in the next variation or whatever, it's possible, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, the numbers that are here as of August, they're all estimates. Um, the numbers for the pump track is that in keeping any particular one of these designs or is it just a general?
There's two numbers. One.
Was there the current and the, or the sort of existing size of the expansion? I know the expansion.
Yeah, the rehab is, is based on, um, information we gathered from multiple other sources.
And that's just basically paving, um.
Paving and.
The range.
The range gardens, yep.
Clearing rubbing and.
And then phase D, actually, I looked up what, how much Hanover Township's horse costs, and I base my estimate on that.
Honestly, those numbers were compared to the cost of the, of the playground, they seem low to me, but I have no, and I don't really know. I was gonna say, cause I think like, uh, with, I know when Bella's listens to Pump Track for any community, there is it's like an open million plus dollar park.
Right.
And I don't, I don't think we're gonna be adding like jump lines or any of that kind of soon, cause that's what makes it more, more worth, like not more, like more money, I would say. I, I haven't really looked into too much of that.
Well, Kyle, um, the Hanover Township park, does that include the three stages?
Right now, it's just one pump track at the, I think it's at a local park.
Yeah, is that, yeah.
So technically it's two pump tracks, cause you have a beginner circle like Port Jurgen's, and it's also connected to the starting point of the main pump track. So it's like, you could use that beginner as a warm up or, you know, actually use it as a beginner course.
Okay, so really, I mean, the cost then for that pump track plus the cost for your rehab is.
Care, care.
Yeah.
Yeah. My, my question is, I think I asked it last time. I don't know if we got clarification but the bid threshold, obviously with most of these numbers would be reached. But did we figure out if, if a place like Dirt Sculpt or something like that, and it's a professional service, so they were exempt from bidding, or is this still?
I thought you would still need to bid.
Solicit, like from all of the two above.
Solicit, yeah.
Probably.
You could probably.
Being an architect, architects don't have to be bitted, right? No, that's protected, sorry. Then you can get a, you can get an architect that designs these courses. I'm, I'm sure they exist.
And then the labor is.
And then, and then you find a contractor that architect's willing to say, yes, they can do it, or no, they, they can't do it. So you're, you're, you're making sure the design is good. Um, by not having to bid the architect, finding the right architect that is a pump track architect. Yeah, the Dirt Sculpt would be a good one, cause those guys do it all the time, and that's, that's what their job is. They design it, then they build it. And they can bid on it too as well, but then, but, you know, if you have to bid the actual contractual work. Those questions there.
Yeah, well, let's get through this and then we can uh, entertain any, anything else from anyone, committee, boards. Whoever had there.
Um, I was wondering where this would be posted for bid, and I hope that you put the opportunity up for bid, because there is more than one person that does it, unlike the bridge bid, bid that just happened where you rewarded it just, just the one person. Um, I mean, there's a lot of local professional contractors here, as such me, I'd like to put a bid in on this. When the time comes up, if this, quite frankly, I'm one of the best in the world as well, so I think it would be a very good beneficial thing for a towns person to be involved with it as well.
I think it would be on Penn Bib.
It would be on Penn.
We would do.
It'd be, it'd be probably, it'd be posted probably on our, our website.
We'll link it and it will be on.
I mean, we have to get funding for this first.
Correct, correct. We have to.
We're talking.
That's the next.
Long time away.
Yeah, understood, but, yeah, I just like the opportunity to look at it and put my two cents in it as well.
Yeah, sure.
This question, the total cost of the park, this whole master plan, how much of it?
It doesn't even add up, because I think the.
I kind of have some of these, like, we're not going to do every single thing in here, most likely, and certain.
Well, you can't, cause there's options. There's dog park and the six. So I mean, I, you have the, the way it's priced out here is, this is the cost of, of doing the disc golf. This would be the cost of doing the driveway. This, so like the entrance driveway, parking lot, that's the, one of the biggest ones. It's about four twenty. Um, you know, they've got bike pack, bike pump track rehabilitation's a hundred and twenty five thousand. The expansion is another three hundred thousand. Dog park sixty one, playground was seven eighty six. That's why we were all like, oh my gosh, uh, that seems crazy. And maybe we'd never find the funding to do that. So maybe, I mean, the whole point of this is it's a plan.
And the fact player, that's what I'm saying right now. Oh, my gosh.
Well, fortunately, we're not saying that we're gonna.
Tax dollars to do this, right?
This is gonna be by grant?
Well.
That's the hopefully.
If, if at all, again, this is a plan, it's only a plan. Um, so you have to have a plan first before you can even go after money, and there might be grants that.
Got approved, get the plan and.
Right, and you, once you have the plan, then you get the land development, then you get, you know, they get the, but you have to start with something. And it may very well be that as we go forward, we're like, there's four hundred thousand dollars worth of grants. What's the most important thing we wanna do now? That'll be the next thing. The here is, well, where's, what's, is this doesn't prioritize anything.
So that's why it's phased out.
But my understanding how the grants work is the four hundred thousand, you get the grant, but you also have to match the taxpayers' money for it.
Sometimes, sometimes it's not, because you can have two different grants.
Yeah, but an LSA grant can be the fifty percent match that you have for a DCNR grant.
You pay the tax a fifty percent match, Jacob. Are you gonna ask the residents if they really wanna match that fifty percent for that grant?
Wait, we're not even, even close to that spot. So what I'm saying is in the past.
Sure.
Promise.
I, I can explain this. Um, so what the township normally does to save, um, funds and use and maximize all of our grant funding is we'll pursue an LSA grant for a project. Um, let's say we get a hundred and fifty thousand for that project through an LSA grant, and then we'll turn around from DCNR and we'll say, hey, this LSA grant is going to be our hundred and fifty thousand dollar match to acquire another hundred and fifty thousand dollars from, uh, DCNR. So we use two grants to offset the costs. So if, if it is a three hundred project, you're no, you're not looking anywhere near a fifty percent match. It's, it's greatly.
Okay, but at the end of the day, you're still getting a small portion or a chunk from the taxpayers to pay for this park, and then you get.
If you're a prolific user of Mount Airy Casino, where the LSA gaming funds come from and store. But that's.
That LSA money is, is, you know, casino money.
I, 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 I know. You don't need to tell me.
All right. It's just that it's public explanation so people can understand.
This is similar to what we did, uh, in revisions and, uh, improvements of Waters Edge Park and the fishing pier and so forth. One grant matched with another so that, uh, at the end, I don't think it costs as much of anything.
Fine. In time.
Any other? So I guess our next step at this point, uh, you don't have to, to vote here. This just has to get sent to DCNR in order to be approved.
Right.
And they would tell us whether or not that reaches the final status, right?
Right, and once you have all your comments back from DCNR and we revise anything that they need, it'll go back to the board of supervisors for adoption.
Would this be time to bring up, I mean, one of the things that, uh, was the most kind of popular, there was, uh, the boat launch essentially.
Yeah.
And apparently that got dropped. I know that's been a contentious thing too, and I'm, I'm sure that had something to do with it. Um. Would that be something to bring up now, or something I can potentially change for the future, because I know there's. A lot of potential, uh, grab money that is completely separate from this, or waterways, because Pennsylvania is second in waterways only in Alaska. And a lot of money available for development of that. Development of water access can actually have, you can have a autonomous boom gate that's solar powered, it goes around fifty thou- fifty thousand. It can also partially pay for the parking, you have a funnel where. Because we're racks there, there also fencing was an issue, we brought it up and dismissed because potentially becomes projectiles on flood zone, but you can actually. Install fencing, it has to be permeable or breakaway and or breakaway, so something like an equipment tier fence could kind of, number one. You're paying for the convenience, you can have fencing on either side of the creek, because people ignore signage routinely, there's. Hundreds of people that are that are in that river, and if you. They're going to be there one way or the other, then they pay for the convenience to to actually use it, use the water access. Whether they're paying three dollar fee or whatever to get down there, if they want to launch canoe or kayaks, that's fine, if they want to just go down there with their barbecues, that's fine as well. But at least it's then generating revenue that pays for the entire park.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we just want to discourage the barbecues and all that stuff down by the creek itself, but. You know, I I see your point on on the boat launch stuff, and I think that we talked about looking at sites at Minnesick in the future for that type of thing. I think that.
It was at, that was two meetings ago, I mean, when we were, three meetings ago, when we were looking at the different options. Right, that was one that ended up based on comments that were made by the public, concerns. Issues about doing things in the floodway itself, right, because that would involve steps there and also stuff, that's ultimately why it came off. I personally saw it as a bit of a contentious issue, and I'd rather not have one of thirty elements kill the whole. Right, plan, or make people absolutely hate the whole plan, when it was just one little bit. Um, so I think we also tried to get rid of sort of the things that are more contentious and put in the things that everybody genuinely agreed. Um, yeah, we would all like an improved bike park, you know, adding some some extra um disc golf. Holes would be nice, better security, better um parking, so this ended up being a little bit maybe more conservative of a plan in that sense.
Yeah, and I understand also, it's, I mean, the entire thing is kind of modular, you know, like you said, there's options, dog park, no dog park.
For sure.
Also, I know a knee jerk reaction for some would be, you know, no, don't approve, they don't have a water access, like people are, aren't going to go to the waterway anyway. I mean, I did the tree work across the river there, and basically, you know, leaving debris is kind of habitat, and it was trying to actually. Um, shut down some of those trails, even though there's signage there, people have made trails there. Um, put three over the one trail, and literally a few days later, there's a, you know, they've beaten another trail right past all, you know, trespassing signs without regard for that. Now, they again, the, you know, fencing being there to actually prevent that and to send them to an actual control thing. Point to access the waterway. Again, I think, it it is what it is, like I said, I understand that it again, it really was the tension issue.
I suspect if the township, I'm not this big if. Um, wanted to ever do that, I I maybe Minnesick would be a better place for, that's already where people are going.
Yeah.
To do that, so if there was a a desire to control that better, siphon it better. Um, and manage it and allow it, I would think it'd be on that side versus this, I'm not saying that people aren't coming in on this side, but.
Yeah, and and also just the, you know, the security and safety concerns, where you're you're now controlling the access rather than, you know.
Right, yeah.
Going in to catch as cash can, so.
Right.
Just put it out there.
No, I I'm glad you did, and I mean, I think you're interested, certainly like to see where you think it might be worthwhile at Minnesick, if there was a scunt that you thought would be good.
Anything else? We will do general public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, so sorry, if I was jumping, just a quick question, do we have to make any motion to move this to DCNR? No, okay, it's just gonna be that, alright.
I have a question. I'd like to know why. Because I think most of you, especially the supervisors, know that I have filed. A lawsuit with you guys in reference to my road, which is Prices Landing Road, why you went ahead and had this meeting tonight?
I honestly can't see what that would have to do with this, and we're not gonna comment on the litigation.
That map? That you have up there, our road is right there. Your whole park goes right through the road.
Well, that information wouldn't be new.
Right?
So I, we're moving forward with the process that we followed since the beginning?
Okay, but you were served papers.
It has nothing to do with.
There's been response, there's been bigger response and.
Okay, I don't wanna know.
Jacob, I think what she's saying, that if it's a litigation, maybe this whole authority should be frozen.
Not how that works.
Are you sure on that?
Positive.
Okay.
Really?
Okay.
You raised your DCNR grant approval or your grant application, it states in one of those.
It states what?
Julia knows, tell him, Julia.
No, no, what what is it state?
Julia.
Okay, Julia's not the puppet, you can say what you want her to say.
Okay, it states that if there's any type of litigation that has to do with any type of property that's involved. In your grant that you're applying for, it cannot be done.
That sounds like development of the park, not not a study.
Right.
We own the property.
Really?
We're not gonna go into your litigation, but I think that, you know, that will resolve itself.
Oh, yeah.
And Jacob?
Okay, go ahead.
My name's Jacob, I live down at Prices Lands.
Sure.
I have my deed here, I'm gonna leave it with you for you to go over, it has property. On this deed that's on here, and I want you to go over it, just to see if it matches anything on here, okay? Can you do that for me?
I think future engineers will do it, yeah.
May I?
I mean, let me try.
Can you spell your last name, right?
And that's the original view.
Don't do it.
Yeah, I'm gonna.
Make a copy.
Yeah.
All right.
I will, yes.
Can we make a copy of this, we should not be taking.
Custody for right now, and then we'll get the copy, and then we'll give you the original back after the.
And I do have another one, but that's. But that's.
You have an updated theme, well, that that one might be helpful too.
This is the original.
Okay.
Years ago.
Well, if you wouldn't.
We, we fired through the bank.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind sending us the updated one too, just for our benefit, that would be great.
Car.
Okay, perfect.
For now, how do you have a public park for a private road?
So, I I'll answer, it it is. The opinion of the township based on information from its engineer and its counselor, I'm just gonna state. That this road belongs to the township, it is also a road for which there are many deeded properties that have. Deeded access, and what's the word I'm looking for?
Right.
Right, easements and easement. That is the township's. Um, opinion on this issue for which there is a legal suit questioning whether that is correct or not.
Well, how did, like, none of our year this road when it's been fired for decades and decades and decades and decades? I never got a letter saying that anybody was gonna buy our road.
Well, that would have been over.
So there's an entire, there is something, I bought my road from the township that's eight.
I'm just telling you that this is the op- opinion of the township, by the way, nobody up here bought that land, so we're not here when that happened, we're just telling, we're, I'm telling you what. Our engineer in reviewing the document says that, I'm not saying my road, I'm saying the township, according to the documents that.
I'm not saying it's my road.
Okay, I'm just saying the township.
And we're not changing that.
Absolutely, correct, absolutely.
Correct, I'm.
Really, excuse me.
Correct.
You have people, you do this, you have people going across the road.
Right.
So the liability, the liability of someone getting hit by someone coming down the road by someone at night. Because it's almost been done a few times.
I am with that little boy on a bike.
So if this is gonna go on, and you guys don't wanna listen to the lawsuit that's gonna happen.
You've already sued us.
There's gonna be another one, so you better update the insurance. Because you are putting the general public.
You're not taking us into any consideration at all, because we've lived there a long time.
So, can I?
We're not having crosstalk in this room, one person at a time, please. Eileen, you were saying.
Sorry, I never got any kind of information or letter from you that you were digging over our so called road. And my neighbors, the Seabombs, now they bought a road apparently, so I don't know where I live anymore. Basically, because it's like, I got a road here, and I got another road here, and Seabomb's saying, you can't come in my road.
Right, well, we're we're not, we're not changing.
But to get out in case of emergency or fire.
Right, well, we're not changing the access on on river.
I know, but you're accessing people in, we have not had people in and out of our road for years, it's been private down here.
So, yeah.
You know, Jacob.
And I do wanna say, I just add.
Two thousand three.
I mean, the, the entire point of this, of doing this was was to get information, I'm glad you're you're raising concerns. Because it it certainly is a, I mean, it's a concern of mine as well, that this is regardless of who owns it, and the courts can figure that out. But if you, there is definitely an easement and a right to use the road by these residents, for sure, no one's debating that. And so, from my point of view, I think from the other supervisors as well, there was no desire to make this a real access point for any part of the park. I'm I'm just, if you look at this plan, it's not about accessing, everything that we have here was about crossing, yes, crossing the road to do. Basically, the um, the disc golf, um, and some trails.
Up against other people that are not gonna be happy, because you're accessing other people onto other people's property.
No, I'm saying, because the road is not, the plan is not to 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 make that an access road for any cars, there was no. And this was with these with these residents in mind, it was.
It's why we added that two hundred foot buffer.
And we added a buffer which is more than is there now, I'm just.
Really a lot of things you have to look at, though, safety, people coming in, getting access to the river, drowning, there's so many drownings.
Yeah. There's no access wildlife.
Sorry.
Um, yes, who maintains these roads, who plows these roads, who, um, you know, services these roads when they need to be, as the township? Since you're an athlete.
No, no.
No, I mean, I thank you.
Which is standard in an easement situation.
Go ahead, sir.
Alright, um, so I I hear your arguments about the ownership of the property and lands. Um, and the uh are taking your property, but. Um, would you rather share your property with the public that uses it and betters it? Or would you let someone buy it from a conglomerate and make it into a warehouse? The nice thing about a park is that it provides space for everyone, and as opposed to. Worrying about who owns it, which I'm very aware of Prices Landing and Judge Seabomb's property, and you also have problems with her, which is fine. But for us to share the property all would probably be a better. Use of the space as opposed to how it fell to ruin for, uh, and.
That's your point of view, I, that's your point of view, you own the property.
Hold on, we're not doing, we're not doing crosstalk.
Yeah, it's Joseph.
And your last name?
Vella Corta.
Can you spell that?
V I L L A C O R T A, and I just, uh, I just wanted to make us, um, another side view, and I definitely agree with. Uh, the locals that are stating that they don't want change in a bad direction, but I think that some of. It is just a suggestion to coexist as opposed to abolish or. Uh, minimize, and definitely the the expansion of the park, in in our opinion, is that the way that the space is used. It would be less impactful than something that would actually create flux with the road, and I greatly appreciate. The people who have lived there for over a hundred years.
Thank you.
Uh, and I appreciate them allowing us to share some of their space, and don't ask for more than what we're, uh, welcome to. Yes, yeah, I, I'm part of the, uh, token of this off week.
Is that what it's called?
Uh, it's a club, uh, and we just, yeah, we we would like to help better our relationship, maybe even. Help the coexistence, and it's just a opinion that I'm trying to, uh, make known that, you know, we.
You wanna have your frisbee ball?
Yeah, and we just wanna make the park better, as opposed to let it go to waste and overgrown.
You're gonna have to deal with a lot of trees.
Of of course, yes.
Bye.
Oh, I I afterwards, it was. Crossed up, you can.
You go on, go on, Tara.
So Joseph, so my name's Tara, I I've had many conversations with my grade, I live down there too.
Yep.
Um, I can answer with Mike, he understands our concerns, but we know that you guys are the ones doing all of the upkeep, we appreciate that. That you guys take such good care of the frisbee ball, um, so I think, uh, members of my family actually walked with some of you guys. Yeah. Like any additional holes, so.
I know the, I know the fight is not with.
Yes.
I appreciate that, I I don't mind.
So we don't have any issues with you guys, we, you know, we wave, we say hello, we, we appreciate you guys.
Yeah, we have our issues.
So I just to, I mean, I really encourage people to look at this plan in detail.
For you guys to know, we don't have an issue with any of them.
I'm sure you might be looking for your support.
Thank you.
Am I right, am I right, maybe I'm wrong, that. The only thing proposed on the north of Prices Landing Road is disc golf and some some trails.
Right.
So I just wanna, I mean, that was intentional.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, okay.
Then, yeah, um, I'm the one to do the safety perimeter, the no fucking ticket, the ashtray pit downs for the the disc golf through there, and. There's no parking or anything additional happening with that road.
No.
I mean, I know there's barely room for me to park there to do the tree work and stuff like that, it's just improving the.
Yeah, we picked the paths of least resistance as well, so as to reduce less, um.
Yeah.
Impact on the environment, because the the one thing that we are great proponents of are preserving the space and. The nature that is there, maybe even giving them a little bit more, uh, space, uh, co-mingling, that would be nicer for all of us.
And on on Prices Landing Road itself, the only thing that would be there would be.
One cross.
Yeah, there's no, there's not, there's no vehicle parked there at all.
Correct, no.
Yeah. Yeah, you were all.
Yeah, what's up?
Yeah, you're on, look like you're chipping in the hospital when you stop like. But I, yeah, so I understand the concerns, then, yeah, of course, like, it's only gonna be people walking across there doing the disc golf, there, there's no part of the home that does.
Yeah, if we could, we would figure a way out around it, but we have yet to learn to fly, uh, we'll work on it, um.
Well, cool, well, cool.
Any others? Go ahead, sir.
I, uh.
And if you can state your name for the.
For time to say this, and it's not exactly about the park, it would be about the motorcar situation at Act Nine.
You might just say your name for the record.
No, this is, this is for the representative, that's the reason I'm here.
Are you really with your mind, we're in difficult?
Yeah, generally for this.
I mean, it's basically just a couple of positive points to maybe throw out there, and that, that would be it, two minutes. I just, I mean, that park, the bikes BMX park's out. I just, I mean, that park, the bikes BMX park sounds awesome.
Sir.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, may I have your name, please?
Wallace, W A L A C E, I'm from Jim Thorpe. Um, so I've been involved with motocross since a little kid, amateur levels up to professional level, um. I've been at it for for a little while, but I still enjoy just riding, and being in Jim Thorpe. I'd love to have a short ride over here compared to everywhere else I have to go. I also work at a motorcycle shop, so anybody buying dirt bikes to kids, parents for their kids, whatever. We really don't have a specific spot to send them, so if this place could exist, it would be awesome, um. I realize some people don't care for the noise, um. There's there should be a, you know, compensation somewhere, there's a couple motocross tracks out in PA that they don't, on Sundays, they don't start till eleven thirty. They shut down in the evening to give people a break. This place would be awesome, you have a couple, some people willing to put up the land and uh and go for this, and you just can't find that. Um, I really think it would be a positive thing for families, um, usually the father's working on the bikes. And and helping the kid, the mom's cooking on the grill and taking care of the gear and everything, and. It's an awesome family event, it's organized, if you're at the track, everybody's going one direction, it's not. People running into each other and like there's riding up Nescioni, Pennsylvania where it's just chaos. That's not like that, it's gonna be organized and uh, I think it's awesome and you should take a a good look at it. I know myself, if if it's here, I'll be probably coming every weekend, I'm gonna stop, grab a bite, eat a sandwich, some drinks at Wall Bar or whatever, gas. And if I have bucks on the way home, I'm gonna be eating dinner at a local restaurant, so. Man, I I hope you guys would take a good look at it and and see if there's a way to compromise and make it happen, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, my name is Michelle, I've lived in um the area for about thirty years.
My name, your last name?
Conci, C O N T I.
Thank you.
I just wrote a few things if I may have a few minutes of your time, um, I'm Michelle, um, I am a mom of a dirt bike rider. My son is Oliver, he's fourteen. Um, he has extreme mental uh muscle disorder and developmental delays, which prevent him from playing. Football, soccer, football, hockey, any sport really. Um. Because of his disability, the only thing that he found any passion and interest in is riding. My son is now employed by the Moto family, Elisa, Mike, and especially Zach taught my son so many wonderful things. How to use a tractor, how to communicate, how to make friends, um, they took him under the wing, they love him like. They're hideous as bone, um, they gave him courage, ambition to get things done, they call him the boss. Um, it's the best feeling to watch your child succeed in something that they love to do. Um, it's priceless, I mean, as a mom of a special age child. To have him be involved with something, it's just, I can't even explain. Um, there is a facility and a recreation basically for almost every sport except riding. Um, until back nine opened, they've spent many hours, money building the track. Um, all together for boys, girls, men and women, um, it's amazing to watch. Um, they come from all over, they stay at our local campgrounds. And they hook up the bikes to the back of the campers, they go to back nine, they have picnics, they barbecue, it's it's amazing. Um, if your child or even yourself ever wants to explore, that's the place to go. I mean, honestly, it really is, um, it's loud, but every sport is, um, they only run a few days a week. Um, and they are very respectable, they don't run at night, um. I mean, I'm just asking, you know, please allow these riders and please don't deny them. You know, facility, a place to explore, have memorable, you know, experiments, you know, with their kids. Um, build own memories, may not just be football or soccer or something, uh, it is very important to these kids. You know, to have to, you know, have a sport and a place to go, something that they love to do. Especially for my son, he has come such a long way. Learning how to, you know, ride and do something that he loves, and I just, I'm grateful. And please, we, you know, come check it out and see, it's safe. Um, they maintain everything, it it's just amazing, so as a mom. For my disabled son, you know, it's just, I can't express how important that it is, you know, for a place for them. And every other kid to be able to ride and have fun. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can you please address to the public that how Oliver was not, was a non-verbal special needs kid? And with him being attached to the dirt bike learning, he started being vocalized and verbalized. That's something that they need to know, that they're taking away from special needs kids also.
My son.
And you know, it's again, and you are going against the ADA law too, you know.
Yes. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
So guys, Zach, I'm back, I am X one and nine, Roadhouse Court, Eastern, Verpia. Um, I've been told that I'm not allowed to come to these anymore, um. You guys want me to shut up, you want me to go away, you want the crowds to go away and the group to go away, you especially. Um, you have have pressed some crazy harassment charges on. On on our members for absolutely nothing, because you can't handle the truth, Jacob. You can't handle the truth, so you're gonna use, you're gonna use some backdoor way to get the DA to press harassment charges. On just simple, simple, simple thing of asking you to apologize for your conduct. You guys need to take a look at your conduct, not so much you, but the way. The weasel Ron, he don't even show up anymore, and we're still paying this guy, or not Ron, Robert, sorry. Ron was on his phone, looking down, and someone in the crowd called him out, and he he got mad and gets up and starts verbally yelling at us about it. When we're not in the wrong, you're in the wrong. You sitting on your phone and then just asking for a simple apology and calling you a soy boy. You get, you you somehow get harassment charges pressed on him, that's some pussy ass work right there. And I'm sorry, we're not stopping, we're gonna continue to come, because it's our right. The last two meetings, we've been shut down. You completely disregard the public comment, you get through what you have to get through and shut us up. And it seems more of like a civil rights thing now at this point than anything. And don't worry, we'll probably pursue that, I mean, we've had a few contact about it, us, cuz these videos have a lot of eyes on. We've we've stated it, I mean, we're we're getting a lot of views and it's it's getting a lot of traction, and I'm actually kind of enjoying it. Um, it it's 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 great, and it's bringing a lot of light and a lot of attention to what's going on here, especially with you, we're focusing on you. I mean, it's 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 not gonna be good for your campaign. Um, and and for the fact that you you sit here and you're gonna press harassment charges, just makes you look even worse. Even worse, because you can't handle the truth, you can't handle opposition. So anyone that obviously, if you see the opposition in this room, they get shut down real quick by by the ones in charge of the front of this room. If you have a problem, you shut up and you sit here, and actually, if you have a problem, you shut the hell up and you stay home, you don't come here to tell. But no, I'm gonna show up and I'm gonna show up with my crowd, and I'm gonna keep showing up with my crowd. Yes, and at the last crowd, you always make this huge thing that we're all out of town. Um, well, there's a good majority of us that are out of towners, which is great, because the out of towner money is the new money that comes into this town. Not all our old dusty money that's been around here forever. So, we need the out of towners to make this thing, especially you, you got a resort, you got this. The the out of towners are what feed your family as well, same with your your businesses. And I mean, for every finger you guys point, there's three pointing back at you, remember that. Um, so uh, yeah, there's there's a lot to be said with that, and I'm not gonna be shut up, I'm not gonna not show up to these. So guys, if you guys keep opposing this, just expect them to tell you that you're not allowed to come to these meetings. And uh, and as far as threats, there's not been one single threat in this room, I'm sorry that you feel threatened by the by the truth. And and bringing the light this, but I'm not the one in here with a gun, I had a guy sitting over here with his hand on it. On his gun in front of my face yesterday, because I can't talk, because you don't wanna hear the talk, because I'm holding you accountable. Accountability i- i- is is harassment in this room, apparently? This is the most ass backwards thing I've ever had to deal with in my life, um, and. I I think you guys need to be held accountable, you guys should look at your conduct before you point fingers about our conduct. And my, as far as my harassing emails, there's nothing harassing about my emails, Julia. I'm sorry that you feel that way, because you have to work, if that's harassing, pooh, god damn, that's a forty hour week of harassment. Um, so please, if you consider my emails harassing, I'll I'll take the fine on that as well. And and it's just gonna add to our case and what's really going on here, because this seems more of a civil rights case than anything. And I'm sorry that I have to come and and mess your meeting up, what's your name, sir?
Mike.
Mike Dwyer, you you, I've seen your comments on Facebook about me, um, yeah, so, yeah, I'm sorry that I have to ruin ruin your time here.
I said, you you keep coming to the wrong meeting, I mean.
Well, because the because we come to the wrong meeting, because they're dragging this out and hushing it up, and and, I mean.
But even tonight, you're speaking about something that has nothing to do with.
And nothing to do with it, I can't fucking talk to or public comment any other things.
First of all, you can use professional language.
I can use professionals, pretty professional, it's my right.
Okay.
Um, and I'm sorry about that, it just happens, because I'm passionate about this, and you're trying to shut me up once again, and saying this isn't the right place to talk. Well, where is the right place to talk, because the right place to talk is actually the garbage can, according to these people. So, yeah, I seen your comment, thanks for that, we'll we'll come to the Middlesbrough field meetings too, and 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 but. This is, this is just absolutely tyrannical, don't fucking smile at me, a- absolutely tyrannical. That you guys are just just up here doing it, so just keep on doing it, because it's not working, and everyone else is more aware of it. And at the next meeting, if you let us talk, there is gonna be a lot of locals, because you say there's no locals that oppose us. Sean, Chris, they live in Mountain Manor. Grant Hudson live in Mountain Manor, Oliver, they they lived in Mountain Manor, they had a little one, um, until they lived there forever. There's gonna be more residents of Mountain Manor, we have seventy six residents, and you, yeah, that. We can get them here, and we had them here at the last meeting, but you don't let us talk. So for you to say that there's no local thing, you you don't let it talk, and more and more locals are finding out about this, the more and more people are contacting me about the shit that you guys are doing. So, just keep doing it, because it's just, it's, you you guys, you guys are lighting your own house on fire at that point. Let's go, like, keep going, I I I encourage you to keep going, because you're making yourselves look bad. So, just 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 worry about your conduct, and if you wanna press a harassment charge in me for this, please go ahead, I invite you, I would love that, I would love that. Yeah, yeah, that's great, go home to mom, but. Big man, he's back.
Anyone else? I'll move the weed jar. Go ahead.
I'm able, am I am I able to give a comment?
Yep, go on.
Oh, thank you, so, yeah, my, hi, my name is Casper Rod, uh, I live in Leisure Lands, around like eighteen minutes away from the municipal center. But I also live like seventeen minutes away from the back nine, and I I just wanna share a quick story, because uh. It's been going on for a while, and I just wanna share to y'all how important back nine is to me, so um, I started riding bikes in twenty twenty two. And most of my life, I was just sitting on a computer, I wasn't doing much, and I was just riding a small trail bike around my neighborhood. But uh, when I, when I was riding, something terrible actually happened to me in my own community, uh, I was riding around and. Uh, I was passing some houses where even kids were like running out to give me high fives and stuff, and I turned a blind corner and there's a guy screaming at me. I I'm still riding, I just waved to him and I tried to pass him slowly, and then all of a sudden, just, I feel something hit my head. And I looked behind me and the guy's on the floor, and then I realized that this man just hit me. I got hit in my own community where I was riding when I was fifteen. And at that point, uh, it would, it just taught me how unsafe it was to just ride around and, you know, the area alone. And uh, I mean, even for like other riders, I heard some other horror stories, but I don't want, I just wanna talk about myself for now. But when back nine opened, uh, I actually got my first race bike around that time, and that was when I finally had like a safe place to ride. You know, I didn't have to look around blind corners, making sure that I might, you know, there might be a person there waiting to try and hit me. Cuz I mean, that guy, he even had a gun, my, uh, me and my dad confronted him, and he pulled a gun at my dad, and I had to see that, but uh, yeah, right in front of me. And at the back nine, you know, I never had to worry about that, and I even had, you know, friends that I met that. Taught me, you know, how to ride different, and uh, people even encouraged me to like get a project bike and learn how to. Like fix dirt bikes myself, and I'm here, sitting in the garage, and I bought a whole dirt bike that now I'm fixing on my own without any help. And I even had like Zach, he was, he helped me so much while I was riding at back nine, and just like. In just the span of like one riding season, I was able to get so much faster than I ever thought I would be able to. And just, I mean, on top of that, I was in the best physical shape of my life, my my whole life I was obese. Because again, like I said, I never really went outside. And when back nine opened, uh, from that one year that I rode, I lost like twenty pounds only going on the weekends. I wasn't even able to go to every weekend ride, but I was still able to go, you know, to as many as I could. I'm not a good rider by any means, but still, I was able to finally be active for once in my life, and now I'm just for almost a a year now, I'm. Back to where I started, I gained all that weight back, and, yeah, that's all I'm asking is just, you know. To think about it. That's all, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we close, well, then. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go right ahead.
That, there is a previous speaker, I I I didn't catch his name, sorry.
Casper Lorat.
Okay. Was was speaking passionately in in a public meeting, it may not be, you know, it's mostly for the for the park and all that, but if it's open to public comment. Maybe makes a a very good point about, you know, first amendment issues and all that. Speaking passionately and basically, yeah, we're even heatedly, I mean, this is all protected speech and. Even if we, sometimes some make people not wanna have it or or have those critiques, but he does have have a right to say, that I don't wanna see. You know, what'll end up happening is say, my tax money going towards a lawsuit, that's that's well founded, because. We don't wanna chill his free speech. Yeah, and and, yeah, I just.
Yes, it is.
Like I said, I. Don't know, you know, the whole backstory behind it, but there is, you know, kinda got a little heated here for a minute, and then just have a. Have had pie here in the room on that.
Keep coming for more of the meetings.
My name's Elisa Burne, B Y R N E, got it? Um, I just wanted to speak to you, Mike, because we are. Coming here for relevancy, both of those two kids will ride the pump track. That's your future generation, because it's gonna take what these folks just said, we're spending tonight, your life, tonight, talking about something that's in development. And I'm hearing, what's the timeframe on the bike park? When would it be like ridable, hypothetically, if we're talking about it, would it be like one year, one day, ten years, ten days?
A year after the the grant, if we were to get a grant?
I I can't imagine, two, three years.
Two, three years?
I think, I don't, I don't.
Will still be around, those two kids. That kid, no, we have a place here, we have a place here, and I came the other night to the environmental advisory board, and guess what I did? I signed up enough people for the cleanup day, for there to be a cleanup day, because there weren't enough people.
I'm happy.
We're hoping, cuz guess what, by participating in our local government, we're sinking our little feet into all of it. So every board we're welcome at, okay, last night, I just wanna let you know. That I came to a meeting, that I spoke relevantly on the topic of the cleanup and all the things going on. And this gentleman over here, the constable, came over, put his hand on his gun, it's on film. Cuz these gentlemen are kind enough to document this for the entire world to see, the entire world. Okay, see you.
Yeah.
And me, and him.
Yeah.
And guess what he did, he approached me and my two kids and my business partner, put his hand on his gun and told me, you're done talking. Guess what, I wasn't done talking, so that type of behavior is unacceptable, and I got, guess what? My counsel, Robert, I spoke spoke to my counsel, I know you don't wanna speak to me, but I spoke to my attorney. Ron called him before the meeting, guess what? They asked us not to come, they don't want us to come here. Guess who's here? I have the floor, right, it's my right, I don't come here to start our arguments, I'm coming here to find resolve. We want to resolve this, you told us in your letter, the board of supervisors wrote a letter that came across my desk. One day after the last meeting, last Thursday, there was a meeting, Friday, they all got together and they said. If these folks continue to come to these meetings, there will be no negotiation, is that a threat?
It's not exactly what we said.
I have the letter, do you want me to read it?
Read it, see it.
Read it, read the letter, go right ahead. You can have the floor.
But we, we don't do transfers at times.
Summarize it and email it to everybody and post it on my Instagram page. So if you wanna read the letter, it'll be on my Instagram page, Back Nine M X. Follow us on Instagram, we have four hundred and I think seventy-nine people looking at us in the past thirty days, really looking at you. You guys, and we actually, Robert, USA Today has reached out to us, we're scheduled to have a nationwide news media outlet interviewing us to talk about you. To talk about you, Robert, you're gonna be famous finally. We're gonna speak about you, but I can read the letter that you guys wrote to our attorney. The day after we came here to exercise our right and to try to make an attempt to settle this so that we don't go to litigation, because when this all started, Ron told you, he was sitting in that seat. I highly advise against going into litigation on this Back Nine case. It will be very costly, very costly for the taxpayers. And in the end, we may not win. They do have rights and a lot of them are in their favor. The zoning issue, Ken Wolf, unclean hands, the ex parte conversation that Robert Lovenheim had with one of Tammy Booth. The fact that the harassment, you're saying we're harassing you? I was called a B I T C H publicly on a Zoom meeting in this room. My children were called the R word, so was Oliver, by one of the people named on your lawsuit. They called us the R word, we have it on video, harassment? We're not harassing you, we're exercising our right. And you're telling us not to come or else. You know what? We've been approached by so many strangers that turn out to be our neighbors, that live in this township. With very similar stories. And guess what? They have the same experiences we've had with Jacob, with Robert, they're in litigations, but they were also advised to be quiet or else. So we were told in this email, Zach, would you like to read it? I am a little under the weather, you wanna read the email for them? They like hearing from you.
This is a sequel to today's executive session with the Township Board of Supervisors regarding the Mountain Manor litigation. While it's not my intent to reveal any client confidence, I believe it is important to appraise you and the issues that were discussed so that you approach your clients regarding this matter. The disruptions and the, point one, the disruptions of meetings and bullying of the board, especially the individuals who do not live in the township and indeed some are whom, are out of state residents, have not been helpful, in fact, they are some of the township residents who are not attending the meeting for fear of their physical safety. As I stated, the P A State Police have been called more than once on the antics by of the crowd and um, yeah, they've been called, but no one's been cited except for the people on your side who actually harassed me, grabbed me by my neck and took me out of the room. Yeah, just saying, there's a whole paper trail of it. Uh, and for whatever reason, Mountain Manor representatives continue to spread false information. I'm not sure I hear this is false, it's coming straight from the horse's mouth. In regarding to the case, I E. Mountain Manor representatives have stacked at, stated at several meetings in which I was intended as they have won the case and the township will be left at the Commonwealth Court. Uh, and we will be racing again very soon and, well, we've never raced there, so that's obviously a line too. Uh, and third point, if there is any hope for settlement, the two items noted above must cease immediately. If not, I believe there is no hope for settlement and at this point, oh, oh, this is another good one. Also, any chance of settlement, which is very, very slim, would require operation of the motor trap, cross track or the track to be moved elsewhere on the two hundred acres in which Mr. Byrne has stated Mountain Manor owns. And it would require a zoning change so that not to establish a president in the R one zoning. So if we move it on the same property that Zoned Resort, we can move it and it can exist and you'll give us the permit. But it can't exist where it is on the property, the same property that Zoned Resort. So I'm not sure who's spreading the misinformation, but it sure isn't us. Because we can provide all the stuff and, and in fact, we actually do provide a lot of our information for the public to see. And public transparency is actually working out very great, so we continue to use our voice, especially our voice online because it's big. And she said four hundred and ninety-seven, she forgot to add four hundred and ninety-seven or four hundred and, yeah, ninety-seven. Wow, no, it's almost a half a million, holy shit, I can't even wrap my head around it.
Mm-hmm, and I just wanted to say that we do belong here, we do have the right to speak here, I know that I was, people did this to me, the gentleman at the front of the room told me last night that legally he would give me five more seconds to speak and that's just not the case, we know our rights and we are productive members of this community. Maybe there's litigations, maybe there's some neighbors that aren't fans of what we do, but we have a whole lot of people that believe in us and I believe the law is on our side, so I'm sorry that it inconveniences you, but we'll meet you on the, the Facebook. I personally don't participate in the Facebook, but I know that a lot of you are out there making some comments and it goes both ways, like you have the right to do that, so call us whenever you want and come and check out our place, again, I had mentioned that before. Um, Robert wasn't a big fan of the idea, cause Robert's already been out there, but, um, the last time, the last time Robert attended, we, we aren't gonna hurt you, we aren't gonna harm you, we aren't gonna put our hands on you. So you can come back to work, Robert, we'll see you here Tuesday. Right? Are you able to come back to work?
Two troopers are here, Robert, you're all right.
Okay, well, I guess he's, he's exercising his right to pretend he can't hear me.
You probably do the yet.
Sleeping? Okay, well, I'm not quite finished, but I appreciate you allowing us, what?
You're gonna have to wrap it up.
Okay, I will do that.
She should hurry up.
That's okay. Thank you for allowing us, you know, the opportunity to exercise our rights. Unfortunately, we're having some issues with this so-called settlement that Ron and I had discussed. We reached out through the appropriate channels, it's very clear to us that you don't want us here. But I wanna make sure that everyone's aware that we are not coming to harm you, we are not harassing you, we are not creating chaos. The day that that letter was written, that they said that we incited chaos in the room, it was myself and my two children. There was three of us here, that you're paying. These guys are subcontracted, they don't usually come to meetings, but because we come here, we're hiring constables, we're bringing news cameras and all this hoopla. You know, so I just wanna make everyone aware that there's a lot more people from our area that are invested in this. And we're invested in this too, so we do wanna negotiate with you, we do wanna settle with you and we do wanna come to these meetings. So we look forward to Tuesday, I know that we can't get on the agenda, but we can speak at the public comment, so we appreciate your time, thank you.
I just want my name on the record and my address, Sean Rogers. S A J W N R O G E R S. I live at seven ten Pond Lane. I live on, right by the Back Nine, I'm on the same piece of property. I've been there for four years, have absolutely no idea why this is going on. I've learned so much by all you guys and I gotta tell you, there's a, a level of arrogance here I haven't seen in so long. And to call the police on people, you know, everybody's frustrated here. You shut us down, you don't let us start till twenty to nine, you shut us down at nine, then half of the people don't show up, they're afraid. I understand, I hope your, your child's okay, I know you had a legit emergency last time. But I'm just saying, you guys gotta open up your eyes and just see. You're, the first time I've seen you and you, and you smiled and you, you seem like you have a very arrogant attitude.
No, I'm, I'm not part of that.
I'm just saying, it just seems like you do.
I don't even live in those, I'm Smithfield, so.
You had some comments with Zach, it just seemed like your whole approach, maybe everybody needs to take a step back. And we need to approach with open minds on both sides, that's all I need to say.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Clark, C L A R K. I live at one oh five Clubhouse Court, Marshalls Creek. I'm a proud member of the Back Nine family. I've been coming to these meetings and I've been seeing the reaction from everyone here, including you. These guys should be embarrassed. I don't know what or why you're holding this up, but it's an embarrassment. We are all people here that hired you, that you work for us, you know? I don't understand that, why would you, why would you block the income and the notoriety plus the attraction of our area? I don't understand why, okay? I've been a member of, uh, this township and of Marshalls Creek for fifty years. I've lived in Mountain Manor for ten years, never had a problem, never had an issue or anything. I love living there. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My first I stated for next week at the Board of Supervisors.
You can talk.
Oh, um, I'm not a dirt bike member, just a concerned resident, but all this going on, Jacob. Um, our taxpayers' money is going to litigation and I'm not too happy with that. But I just wanna point out that a certain resident years back, that same property, alright, was gonna have a zoning change, the Arch and B J K project. It was a joint venture with Scott Russell and Mountain Manor, okay? Right behind John, Donna, Donna, the Dollar General store, where the Anderson window is, it was ten acres. Well, the township came saying, we'll give you ten, you give us ten acres, we'll give you eighty acres. But when that specific group of people, okay? You should remember that, cause you were on the planning commission.
I don't remember those details, pretty hard.
I'll, 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 I'll bring those minutes to you tomorrow, I'll email it to you, okay? Um, they started a petition, the same group of people to shut the zoning change, maybe not to have. The warehouse couldn't go there. Um, so we have the same issue with the dirt bike park. It's outdoor recreational stuff. But the thing is, um, they're not putting a warehouse, they're keeping it as is. Their zoning land use is resort and camping. As the other one, like you are, you're an R one, right? And you have the land used as resort and camp, I checked your tax map already, so you can't deny it. Okay, I'm just saying it. So they're allowed to have those dirt bike tracks there as an outdoor recreational facility for their resort. So what I'm trying to say is, no matter what you do, okay, put a warehouse there, if they decide to sell. And they got a good offer like three or four million dollars, I'm pretty sure I would sell too. Going against for a data center to be put there because we know that underneath that land, the aquifer system is there, put a data center. So I'm just wondering if these certain people are gonna again start a petition to stop the data centers or a warehouse or anything. You know, just be, you know, consider about that. You have certain people making a problem and that land cannot be developed. Just think about it, Jacob, the history of it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You had a motion to adjourn on the table, do I hear a second?
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Second. So there's, there's all in favor.
Alright.
Alright.
Hey, we are adjourned.